The planning board. What we're going to do because of the audience here, we're going to go out of order of the agenda. And we're going to hold on to continue the public hearing for 455 Hartford Avenue. And until you have the public hearing with 38 Locust Street. What we do now is move on to 148 Depot Street. And 152 Depot Street. And before we do that, Jim, can you give us an overview of the project?
Yes, absolutely, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I think if we could.
Excuse me. I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing. All in favor of opening the public hearing, please sign by the saying.
Motion to open it.
Yeah.
Brian motion was seconded.
And this will be for both.
For both hearings.
For 148, 152. Brian, will you read the public notice?
Yes. And according to the Town of Bellingham zoning by law, section 240-16, development plan approval, 240-54 storm water management, 240-60 flexible parking options, special permit, 240, 119 major business complex special permit. The planning board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, September 23rd, 2021 at 7:00 PM in the Arkham Meeting Room in the municipal center as well as utilizing the virtual meeting option found on the Town of Bellingham website. The applicant 2020 acquisitions and owner Depot Street LLC proposed to construct a 211,600 square foot industrial building with associated improvements at 152 Depot Street in Bellingham, approximately 20.7 square feet of square feet of land shown in the Cessers Map 38-23 Zone of Industrial. Plans were prepared by Boulder Engineering, 352 Turnpike Road, South Borough, Mass. 01772. The applications and plans may be viewed at the planning, zoning office, or the town clerk's office in the municipal center.
What I'd like to do is ask for a motion to suspend the reading of the second public hearing notice. So have a second.
Second.
All in favor of suspending the reading of the second notice, please sign by the saying. For the public, just to let you know, what we've done is the both notices are exactly the same except for the address difference. So just to be very clear, the only difference is one is 148 and one is 152. The very biggest is identical. Jim, can you give us an overview of what's been happening tonight in this project?
Yes, thank you, guys. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Excellent. So what the board has done now at this time has opened up the hearing for two new proposals, two industrial proposals here on Depot Street. Given it's the same applicant, same property owner, the board has now simply merged the hearings so that we can have a detailed holistic conversation, get the input from obviously the applicant and obviously the neighbors, and look at all this holistically. What the board has in front of them is the application, plan set, traffic analysis, drainage analysis, all of which you can, as the public can find online. Whatever the board has, the public has. So it's all scanned in. Amy Sullivan from the planning offices loaded it up onto the planning website under proposed projects. You, as the public, have access just as the board does. So tonight is the first step in a process here where the board will gain an overview of the project, just as you are just getting a high level overview. From there, we will certainly walk through the next steps, which is starting to get into the nitty gritty, into the details. The board typically will require a peer review, that is, an engineer or engineers who will provide services to the town to look at some of the more detailed aspects such as drainage and traffic, and provide guidance and input to the board as they consider this project moving forward. So tonight is simply an overview of two industrial complexes that are here on Depot Street. And we will, you know, I know the board will take in all public consideration at the proper time.
Jim, can you explain the schedule after this evening's meeting?
Absolutely. So Karen, if I could, share my screen real quick. Excellent. Thank you, Karen. So can you see that?
If you could just return briefly, Jim.
Yeah, yeah, just real quick here. It's much of what I mentioned. So the public hearing process tonight is the first opening of the hearing. It's the big overview. From there, we will, the board will request the peer review, the technical assistance. Staff was going to provide an overview of how it relates to the bylaws and making sure that they've provided everything sufficiently and accurate and quality as the bylaw requires. You know, and moving forward as the months progress, traffic and stormwater technical analysis will be vetted and reviewed. And one of the major issues here that I think the general public is want to note is that this is the concurrent process with the Conservation Commission. You know, the town and the boards recognize that there are conservation concerns, wetland issues, and we take that serious, and conservation is the proper venue for that. Conservation meets every other Wednesday, and they will provide guidance and input to our planning process. So that will be run concurrently, and I would recommend reaching out to Ann Matthews, our conservation agent, if you haven't already done so, if you have any concerns in that moment.
Jim, I suspect what we will do with our schedule is similar to what we did to Bunge Brook and for the public. One meeting may be set aside for traffic management. One meeting may be set aside for stormwater management. One meeting may be set aside for other impacts that we need necessary. So as we go through this, each topic will be addressed at a specific meeting. So your involvement will be critical in all these meetings moving forward. And I definitely want to thank you all for coming here, those here tonight, and those soon. What I'd like to do now is turn it over to Boulder Engineering. If you could give us an overview of the project. It'd be greatly appreciated.
Absolutely. For the record, my name is John Cusick with Boulder Engineering. I'm here with Brandon Barry from my office. We do have representatives of the full team with us. They are on Zoom as well. Project attorney, Jim Montanellis, you know, the project developer and architect are here as well, just happened to be Zoomed. And as typical, Jim has done a great job of aligning exactly what the process is and how this should play forward. As Jim mentioned, this is our first hearing, so I'm going to give you a very high overview of the presentation. I'm not going to dive into very nitty gritty details. We'll be sending this to peer review, and I'm sure that will be fully vetted. If they go too high of a level, please let me know. I'm happy to go into more detail, however you see fit. Okay. So there are two applications, as was mentioned. We refer to one as the north parcel, one of the, as the south parcel. Plan that is for you kind of highlights all of the, all of the property. The north parcel is this piece right, right in here. You know, the south parcel is this piece right in here. And this and that is just excess land. So it's really the north parcel and the south parcel as I go through the presentation. Both parcels are obviously on Depot Street within the industrial zone. Buildings that are posed are standard industrial warehouse facilities. These are nice and they're really low impact, low traffic generators, low parking kind of developments. So we are for you tonight seeking approvals for site plan approvals, stormwater management, and special permits for major business complex as well as the flexible parking special permit. Again, very early in the process, we're also going to be in front of Conservation Commission and the zoning board appeals on the southern side. So focusing on the south parcel first, I'll dive into a little bit of detail on that. Over just to blow up that, which I see. That shows what we're, what we're looking at. So it's 148 Depot Street. That particular parcel of land is about 25 acres to put aside into perspective. Opposing two buildings on site. They're relatively small for this type of use. The northerly of these two buildings is 50,250 square feet. The southerly is about 79,500. You can see in perspective, the building, existing buildings in the north, that's the Dunkin' Donuts warehouse. The south, it's the Best Buy warehouse. So it's kind of straddled in between those, those two buildings. Again, everything is accessed in one driveway on Depot Street. The building is set really far back, as you can see, and they're kind of hidden behind the existing buildings that are, that are on site. So these won't be visible from Depot Street. We have full access around each of the buildings when we enter the site. So it's a fully paved travelway all the way around the buildings under both buildings. We do that for just full access for the nature of the business, but also just to make sure from a fire department standard, you can get to wherever you need to get to. The, again, the southerly, or see, the northerly of the two buildings, there's 31 parking stalls located in the front portion of the building, right in there. And we do have an additional 20 parking stalls to the north that we call out as reserve stalls in case they're needed. We don't, we don't think they're needed, but we wanted to put in there and account for them. There's 16 recessed loading docks on the rear of the site located in that location. And then there's two at grade dots on either end of them. I say recessed because industrial building, they're set about four feet truck backs into them. The other item to point out on this building, you'll notice we're surrounded fully by woods on all sides. The, the way the zoning is, is written, the building could be up to 100 feet from the property line and then parking 20 feet. We're respecting the 200-foot no-touch buffer zone. That's what that yellow line you see is. So that yellow line is essentially 200 feet from the right-of-way of Locks Pond Road. And that would be main untouched land we're not grading on, if we're not doing anything. So that would be a 200-foot natural buffer that would remain as part of that project. Similarly, as we slide down to the next building, again, 79,500 square feet, smaller than the scale of warehouse buildings. This too has full access, fully around the building. There are 74 parking stalls located at the front location right there. And then the loading facilities, as we head into the site a little bit more, is 24, again recessed docks, meant to have great position docks located at that location. Similar to the other building, we continue to respect that 200-foot buffer zone, non-touch, that I mentioned earlier. That's again represented in the yellow line that you see. Under both buildings, we're handling stormwater. You can see the stormwater basin in green. We've got one here on that site. The dashed line is an underground stormwater basin. Heading to the opposite, it's the same situation again, the underground stormwater basin, the lower ground stormwater basin. We've done extensive testing over the past two months or so with doing investigations, depot investigations, technical material. The materials out here are great. It's a great sandy material. Groundwater is very, very deep. Based on that, essentially all the water is going back into the ground. We're going to fully comply with the stormwater standards, state as well as the local requirements. That's fully outlined in the reports that have been submitted. I'm sure your good ear will approve that. From a utility standpoint, there's public water up on Depot Street. We will be connecting to the water line and bringing that to the site, full sprinkler buildings and fire service and domestic. Live fully with codes. There is no sewer on Depot Street, so each building will have an on-site septic system. Again, based on groundwater and the materials out here, there'll be no issue with citing those on site. So would you like me to move on to the north parcel?
Sure.
So the next parcel, as I mentioned, this is the one to the north of this. This one is known as 152 Depot Street. So this is on the other side of the Duncan Square House. The last site we're looking at was kind of nestled between that and the Best Buy. This is on the opposite side. This is about 21 acres. In this particular building here, it's one building rather than two, and approximately 211,000 square feet. Similar to what we presented on the pass plan, one driveway to access the site. Again, full access all the way around the site, which would separate the essentially 40 traffic and the truck traffic. The building has 156 parking stalls located at the front of the, for the building, located there. Based on the length of this particular building, we're adding additional 53 parking stalls on the other end of the building. Just access doors on either side. A total of 209 parking stalls. You'll notice there's 36 dock positions as shown, and then two at-grade positions. There's also some trailer storage that's located right there. Sometimes the larger buildings will have trailers that will stay on site while they do their operation. They will, they will park there. Similar to what was presented on Southern Properties, again, it's the exact same material, very consistent through here. I've actually seen, really haven't seen anything so consistent in a lot of sites I've looked at. But same materials, very great sands, very deep ground water, drainage will be handled in the exact same manner. A stormwater basin above ground located there, and an underground system below the parking lot. And fully compliant with state requirements as well as the local requirements. Similar to the other side, utilities, same thing, full fire service and domestic service to the water line at Depot Street and an onsite septic system. One item I will point out on this particular site, when we had, we've had a bunch of early on meetings with staff just to understand some of the concerns in the area, what items we could work into the application. You'll notice the triangular piece that might be somewhat hard to see right over there, that was one of the excess pieces of land I mentioned. The Department of Public Works has expressed an interest in that parcel based on what they have to do for their MS4 requirements and some of the drainage in the area. They essentially don't have enough area to put water back into the ground in this area with materials that are so good. They've asked if we could provide something to help them out. So we have no problem with providing that parcel to the department as part of this, to build the basins. So that is something relevant to the northern parcel that will be conveyed. From the traffic standpoint, we did submit a full traffic report, even though the applications are separate, we get the north and south. We realize we were viewing this holistically altogether, so the traffic report combined both projects into one. The impacts and the generation. So from the traffic study, and again, we have a traffic engineer who we can bring in, and a consultant, but I'll probably give you the highlights of the study. The entirety of the. Absolutely. I apologize. So we do, we did do a full traffic study, and again, as I started the presentation, these types of developments, they are low-traffic generators, which is, which is nice. The highlights of the peak hour generation, again, combining all of it, the north and south parcels. It's a 66 peak hour morning generation that's comprised of 59 cars and seven trucks. In the evening peak hour, 69 trips, very similar, 59 cars, you come in, you got to come out at the end of the day, and then 10 trucks. So there really isn't much traffic generation that's, that's derived by this. However, early on, we met with staff and it was relayed to us, and I am familiar with the area, that there's an existing issue in this area. We're pretty much split right between the Hartford Ave and North Main Street. This is where the focus of property is. The Hartford Ave Depot Street intersection is frankly horrible. You know, it's, it's got some issues with it over time, very, very difficult traffic patterns. It's currently a failing intersection. We've committed as part of this project to work on signal, signaling that intersection. As part of our traffic study, we ran the analysis. You can't just put a signal up if you want. You've got to run the warrant analysis to make sure that passes. So we've done that, that effort, and it does create the warrants to construct a signal in this location. And the applicant is committed to essentially a $250,000 contribution to construct the signals that should construct the whole signal. The reason I say it's a contribution of that, just to make sure that there wasn't additional work beyond state signalization that the town may want there at the same time. So we're committed to do a $250,000 signal at that, at that location. By doing that, it would bring the traffic levels of service from an F where it currently is down to a B. And so a signal there would do very good. So that is something that was fully outlined within the traffic analysis, and we will have our traffic consultant here at the proper time. Would you like us to bring him in to have that conversation, to talk to your peer reviewer? With that, as I mentioned, we do have a project attorney here, the developer, the architect as well. We submit its renderings as part of this. We can answer any questions you have. I would be delighted to listen.
What we usually do at this point is have the board ask questions. Unless there's something dramatic anyone wants to ask. What I'd like to let you know is probably in the course of the next 15, 20 minutes, half hour, however long it will be, I suspect you're going to hear some questions dealing with the need for the special permit. The waivers on your request. Traffic, hours of operation, the type of tenant you'll have. Stormwater management, again, that will be peer reviewed as well as the traffic. Parking for vehicles, what types of vehicles? Are you going to have trucks or vans? Are the sightlines for the project? Impact on the neighbors? Impact on wildlife? Impact on the aquifer? Construction timeframe? Construction management? And I noticed on both your maps here, we're going to need discussion about storage of stuff from your, from your site, not to impact the aquifer, you know, in that regards. So I suspect those were the type of questions that you may hear from, from the other neighbors. So I'd like to do now is turn it over to everyone who's here. I would like to request a couple of things. Amy here will be taking notes. I assume the gentleman here will be taking notes as well. I know Joe Antinelli will be taking a lot of notes. Notes will be exchanged so that we're on the same page and we'll just discuss this. I do not know if the neighbors have retained an attorney. Okay. Ideally, what we'd like to see done is have the questions run through the attorney and/or through a series of people. Once a question has been asked and answered, Amy will get, find out. Simply asking a majority of, do they agree with this concern? So we don't have the same question asked more than twice. I would also like to see decide not to run it through the attorney, not to have one person monopolize all the questions, so we can have a chance to hear from a wide range of people that are here. I can't thank you enough for coming here. So at this point, I would like to turn it over. Does your attorney want to speak first? When you have a question, there's an X mark there. Do you step up the X mark? Give your name and address. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. My name is John Wuzniak, my attorney. I do not represent all the budding owners or the neighbors. I represent a select few. So I will ask my questions in respect to those. The initial statement that was made was that the traffic would be low impact. But you didn't discuss what the nature of the tenancy was going to be for the various buildings. Would we want to say tenor of multiple use or multiple tenants of the occupant's facilities?
Through the chair, if you'd like to answer one of them. So at this point in time, the tenants aren't, aren't known. They don't have set tenants. So it's expected that it would be a tenant per facility, but there could be more than one tenant in a building, which is, it isn't there yet.
So would it be fair to say that without knowledge as to what particular tenant you're going to have in the ditch in the building? You can't necessarily make the assumption based on your convention that your traffic light signals Hartford Ave from, take it from an F to a B without knowing traffic why it would be utilized by these kinds of, pretty fair to say?
No, not necessarily. And the reason, the reason why is it's the type of use that we're, we're building. It's, it's the warehouse distribution and, you know, whether the name on the, on the door is, is X or Y, it's really the same type of the use as what these are being designed for.
With that type of use, would also include over 300 parking spots for motor vehicles, plus the number of different loading bays they're going to have. You still maintain the convention that the use would be, would be characteristic of the low-impact traffic increase of those streets?
Yes.
And is your assertion that, that the streets at their present capacity are, are going to afford the ability to utilize additional capacity through the street structures that you're constructing?
Yes, as I mentioned, I think as part of this, the developer has committed to working on the existing intersection, which currently doesn't do so well.
Well, the, working on the intersection is going to reduce traffic.
Excuse me, sir. If you could just, it seems like you're cross-examining.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If we, if we just try to leave it to questions.
If you want, I'll bring them right through the chairs, you know, if that, if that, if that's purposeful.
I, whatever you feel comfortable with. It feels like at this point, we want to get as much in the table as possible.
Oh, I know.
I mean, there's a lot of concerns the neighbors are going to have. I don't think this is the time right now to cross-examine the applicant on every issue, but I want you to bring up the issue so we can address them.
I understand, Mr. Chair. Right, with all due respect to the chair, right, the reason for the nature of my examination or questions to the individual isn't necessarily a cross-examination. I'm just exploring, kind of digging in a little deeper to his initial assertion and assumption that he stated it's just going to be a low impact on traffic on Depot Street, which knowing Depot Street, driving Depot Street, having business a relatively short distance from Depot Street, I'm familiar with the traffic volume that goes down that street, and so we'll take it back with 300 parking spots, plus all the loading bays. The assumption for all the traffic studies is going to be that it's going to be low impact. That's all.
As we go through this process, and Jim can correct it if I'm wrong, we will ask our peer review to give a very conservative approach in traffic study, to look at a worst-case scenario. It's what we've done in all the warehouses in town so far, and that has seemed to have worked out well. We, again, we look at. I understand, sir. It's all right. Yeah, we, we, you know, heard, you know, a lot about what's going on. Our approach will be very conservative as to our traffic study. But, you know, please continue.
And, and the, I think the chairman had mentioned the slow removal, where it's going to be, where the snow's going to be left or dumped or put. Do you have any answer to the, the chairs, at least the chairs identification that is one of the issues?
Probably throughout the site.
Well, throughout the site and will, will take an impact. You say it's throughout the site. There's additional property. Because as I view the plans, the plans don't really afford you a lot of outside area beyond pavement and asphalt areas of this project. Will the snow maintain itself on the asphalt areas or will it be snow? Will the snow maintain itself on the asphalt areas or will it be snow removal? It's going to be quite a hard place to replace.
So we can identify that on the on the plans for for all to see. We can do that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, real quick.
Certainly.
Yeah, thank you. So, you know, in order to to continue this conversation productively, perhaps if the individual would like to express his his concerns to the board, and we could have them explored through our peer review engineer. I see, you know, things like traffic, obviously, you guys, as you mentioned, are going to be vetting this thoroughly with our peer review engineer using the most conservative method because, in fact, they don't have a tenant. As the attorney very likely knows, with IT data, you can use a range of data. And with this type of use, the board has historically always used that most conservative and what we would obviously instruct our peer review engineer to to do there. Similarly, with with snow removal, if, you know, again, if these are some concerns that we could certainly jot down and require or request the applicant produce at a subsequent meeting.
I think, again, the purpose of the questioning is to develop a list of issues that need to be further addressed by the applicant. I don't think the applicants have all the answers to every question this evening. So we can just get a series of questions that you want to answer.
And I to Mr. Co covers a couple of firsts of remarks. I'd be more than happy as opposed to asking questions and voice my concerns with respect to my clients concerning projects. And maybe that will in fact return generate questions for this board, and it may simplify and expedite what we're doing here as opposed to me asking questions, follow up questions and the like.
Correct.
May actually.
I think that'd be very good.
If it pleases the chairman and the board, I'll go ahead and take that route if that's.
Sure.
I our my client's principal concerns are that they are in a residential region. The present uses that are that are occupying Depot Street at this point in time are resulting in backups of traffic, tractor trailers. They have tractor trailers, and their concern is they're using jack brakes even though they're not supposed to, just based on the nature of the businesses they're in and the nature of the volume, sheer volume of traffic that's coming up and down the street. The Depot Street was had as a tension, commercial industrial property, hence the bridge by the coal generation plant. However, this building, three buildings, their concern is have been jigsaw into particular properties, and they're looking for variances concerning those properties, which they're claiming hardship, but as you look at the application variance request, the hardship is self created. And a- a- as such, it can't be a basis for hardship in this case. With regard to the traffic, the increase of traffic, you don't build 300 parking spots unless you plan on using 300 parking spots or something pretty close to it. You don't build loading docks without marketing the property to your respective tenants based upon that that use. You're not going to market to prospective tenants and say, well, yeah, I know there's X number of floating docks and X number of parking spots, but we don't really intend to use that because we want to maintain low impact. So their concern is that what's said here is not going to be transferred to reality when they're going to look for the highest paying tenant. Understandably, to gain back a return on their investment. That's first concern. Second concern is these folks have children. They have school buses. They they occupy these properties as part of their residence. The quiet enjoyment of the properties that we interfered with as a result of the sheer volume increase of trucks, cars, traffic and the like on this particular street. This is just a two lane street. This isn't a four lane, highly industrialized area. The town of Bellingham in developing Depot Street envisioned first for generations, and then secondly, smaller type industrial building. But even I note that their concern is, excuse me, their concern is that we can see Dunkin Donuts and Best Buy from the larger facilities that are there, the increase of of traffic and the increase of obstructions of just driving in the safety mechanisms mechanisms on the street has been adversely impacted just by those simple additions of those larger warehouse facilities. Those are the traffic lights on Hartford Ave will not decrease traffic volume. And if those traffic lights are there, and you have a choice, traffic, stay in the line or the other way, and end up in the center of Bellingham. Center of Bellingham will be overwhelmed. But they go right and roll. I think that what is the principal concern is that what this is going to do is not only change the character of the neighborhood of the area, potentially impact in a negative fashion box pond, waterways, and wetlands and the wildlife, but it's going to impact the citizens who invested in their properties, their residences on that street. I think this plan has had three buildings, significantly sized buildings, jigsaw. There's a contention that, well, we cut it in half. It's not as big. It's cut in half because it can't fit it in that space. They can't fit it in the spaces that they desire. So their concerns principally are the quality of their their life as they now know it, the quality of the street they live on, the quality of the neighboring areas, and the quality of life in the town of Bellingham. And that's their concern. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I assume from the applause, everyone agrees with that.
Even if you put those lights, traffic will be up too.
One person at a time, please. Yes, gentleman in the back, please step up here and give your name and address.
My name is Jeff Willdo. I live on 230 Depot. So when I was yelling from the back, my apologies. The lights on Hartford, yeah, it'll make it easier to turn on to Depot, but it won't make the traffic better. I mean, you're going to back up already. If you go out there, I'm sure all the board has, many other people here, driven Hartford Street during rush hour. It's a nightmare. I mean, I'll do literally anything I can to not drive down that street during those times because it is hell. I mean, you're already backed up past the the sand and gravel as it is. Pretty far back, right? You're going to be you're going to be backed up to Home Depot or further, and that whole stretch almost into Bedway is going to be disastrous. You're going to be having backups on the highway, probably like you haven't rent them by the Rentham Mall, this, right? We've all we've all driven by the Rentham Mall at exit, right? It's it's an atrocity. I don't I don't understand how you're going to have how many, excuse me, how many parking spots and how many?
Just direct everything.
So with the amount of truck stalls and the amount of parking spots, I don't understand how it's going to be better. Further, as I look at the cars driving up and down that street, for the litter coming out of the trucks is disgusting. It's it's gross. I have stuff in my yard all the time from truck drivers and other people using that road. Second of all, this isn't good for the town. There are no jobs coming out of this. Yeah, maybe a couple people. Ninety-five percent of the jobs are Rhode Island jobs. This isn't good for the town. Like tax pay, well, they're not taxpayers. So what does the town get? What do we get for this? Are we getting lower taxes out of this? I doubt it. We're getting more trucks. Rhode Island's getting more money because, let's be real, if you go and look at, if you just stood outside on on Depot Street and watched the vehicles come up, Rhode Island, Rhode Island, Rhode Island, Rhode Island, Rhode Island. I have no problem with people in Rhode Island. But they're not the ones being negatively affected here. I am. These people are. So I don't understand how that's helpful for us. Second of all, the trucks waiting to get into the Home Depot those VJs in the Dunkin Donuts facility in the morning is if somebody's going to die, I'm sure. Because there's trucks 10, 15 deep both sides, and how long how long is an 18? What, 50 feet, 60 feet roughly, right? So you have 10 on each side, so that's 600 feet each way. So if I got to get by, I got to gun it. Because I got to hope that somebody isn't coming the other way and we don't head off. Or there's a child or an animal or God knows what. So if you're going to be literally right in between them, because that's what the gentleman here said, we're going to be coming in between those two facilities, kind of shoehorned in the back, that that whole area is going to be it's it's you're going to be down again onto Hartford Street because his numbers are unrealistic. I mean, you could say we're expecting XYZ people, but as as the attorney here said, that's if you have if you have 40 bays, you're going to use 40 bays. You're not going to say, well, you know, three years ago, the developer promised we were only going to use 10. I'm not the developer. I'm a tenant. I want to make money, as is my right. I'm paying a lot of money for a facility. I want to make money. That's my job, to make money. So I'm going to have as many trucks as I can come in there. So you could say, oh, yeah, it's going to be better because of the to the lights, but that's not true. You're still going to have tons of cars. Yeah, maybe it's not going to be a nightmare getting onto Depot Street, sure, because you're going to have to wait all night, but we won't pretend that that matters because of all the excess backup. So you'll instead have people racing down the street to get to to get to their drop off, right? Because truck drivers got to turn and burn as as they do, because that's how they make their money, right? They drop their load and they maybe pick up another one there, or they got to go somewhere else to get a load, or they got to get unloaded. So these guys are on or women are on a tight schedule, so they're going to be running hard, running fast. And I don't understand how you can, anybody can say it's going to be a low impact. That's not possible. And then you talk about the the stormwater and the drainage and the conservation and box pond and that goes into the Charles River, and I mean, you know, that's a huge water resource for our area. I I just don't understand how this is good for Depot Street, for Box Pond, Hartford Street, Mechanic Street. I mean, even out here. Anyway, anyway, I was just naming the streets I know. I'm sure there are other streets. Even out here at rush hour, we all know, you guys all know, everybody here knows, that's a nightmare. So you say, okay, I don't want to wait at that light. I'm going to take a left at at the mobile station, go by the outback and come down this way. So then that then that's going to be a nightmare, and then the people who live on those side roads. I don't know. Everybody, I'm sure everybody knows the side roads I'm referring to as you're going down right inside. All those people are going to be negatively affected, and I guarantee a lot of those people aren't here or aren't aware of how that's going to negatively negatively affect their homes, their lives. So I get that people want to make money. I get that the, you know, businesses want to want to move in, but what's the what's the win for the town? Is the is the newest facility on Mechanic Street down down by PJ? Is that full? Is the place on Maple Street, is that full right now? Like, I get it, but see, like, to me, the place on Mechanic Street, I understand that there are people there, but that's a a larger road and frankly, most of the homes are past that, right? So I I understand that people on Maple Street may have an issue because they're, you know, trying to turn on there. But most of that, you get off the highway, you go by, what is that, Grelick? And you come down, you go by the the Milford Hospital place, and you go by gas stations and and stuff like that, and that's most, that's probably 95 plus industrial or businesses. So, yeah, those people, that's that's cost of doing business for a business. And everybody beyond that, as you come this way, they're not getting hit by that as much because that big building behind the rocks, that's out of their way. So is that full? Is Maple Street full? I mean, I'm not.
There's a question, sir.
No? I know, I was just.
The applicant cannot answer.
But what I was saying for the to the board, to consider.
We we, yes.
Those are things the board.
We're well aware of that.
I I know, I'm just, you know.
And just to address something that you mentioned. I don't know if you followed any of the meetings that we have. This board's very concerned about the traffic intent. The aquifer intent, if you've been following the past three months of meetings, we're very concerned about the Bellingham is a huge aquifer and the quality of our water and how it impacts our residents.
I I and I appreciate that. I do. I just, you know, I I feel like a lot of the people here, I hope, feel the same way. I just wanted to get off my chest.
Okay.
And I appreciate your concerns, and I appreciate.
So we have traffic.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I see there's a Casey here with her hands up or hand up on Zoom if you if you don't mind.
My name is Linda Monroe on 27 Hartford Ave. Linda Monroe on 27 Hartford Ave.
Okay, and it's we're traffic or are we good with traffic?
Everything. I feel like my house is a truck stop. I walk Depot Street every day. I see feces. I see bottles thrown out of urine, and you wouldn't believe, I've even caught a truck pulling out of Best Buy throwing paper out. I pulled the paper back to the lady sitting at the gate. It's under her pay scale to even talk to the facility about drivers throwing out paper. It's disgusting. We've turned Bellingham into a truck stop, and that's all I want to say.
Got that down?
Anyone else have any questions or not finished? Gentleman in the back, please step forward.
Eric Bandwell, 60 Fox River Road. I know I live in South Bellingham, but my business has been on Depot Street for 46 years. We own B and W Machine right next to the bridge. Bridge was out, by the way. We were there well before the power plant. Power plant is one destroyed the Arch Bridge. So on your traffic study with the trucks and everything else, you might want to really seriously consider it because every single truck that comes out of Best Buy either passes each other on the bridge as a joke because they're all out of Rhode Island. They played chicken. They threatened my employees because instead of stopping when they pull out of Best Buy, they just go. They don't care. Here is now my truck driver that will do the speed limit coming down Depot Street. So if you really want to curb your truck drivers and it's kind of, try putting speed humps everywhere. Slow them down. Make the whole entire town 30 miles an hour. I really don't care. Make the residents do 25 miles an hour and make all the truck drivers really happy. They really don't care. But after being 45 years on the same location, it's a pain now. When you pull out of there and they come up over that crest, what's going to happen when he starts bringing more trucks in, more cars in?
So you're concerned against traffic?
Traffic.
Um, litter. All right, so right across from Best Buy is an empty lot, right? Clear cuts, trees. Guess who owns that? I do. After 45 years, we've been in business, 50 years in October, we want to build a new facility. We have 20 employees. We're growing. I want to build a new facility. But if you don't know the trash that comes out of those trucks onto my property, every other week, I'm over there, two or three trash bags full pulling out of my property or the trucks are parking on my property. So when he sits there and say the trucks aren't going to be an issue or anything, it's going to be an issue. So that's all I want to, I mean, say my piece. One more question is, is how many of these trucks or vehicles, whatever, are going to be registered to that location are going to pay excise tax? Because damn for sure, none of the other businesses are paying excise tax like we are. So that's another thing you need to look at, because if they're here staying more than 24 days a year, they need to be paying excise tax to the town, which they're not. All right?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I believe we do have one individual on Zoom.
We have an individual on Zoom that Jim was going to say.
Go ahead, sir, your question.
Well, it's ma'am.
Ma'am, I'm sorry.
Uh, my name is Casey Pettipas Hagerty.
Can you speak up a little bit so we can all hear you?
Trying to. Casey Pettipas Hagerty, C A S E Y. And then it's P E T I P A S hyphen H A G G E R T Y. And I am at 226 Depot Street. The only different, the only reason I'm not a direct debutter of the 152 property is because it's a railroad between us. Traffic is absolutely a concern for me. I did some numbers during the hours that they're anticipated being open. Based on the traffic study, it's going to be a 60% increase in traffic between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM over what is currently driving down the road based on their study. More personally, I know he there's a 200 foot radius around the 148 Depot Street facility to facilitate a buffer zone between them and Box Pond. There is nothing like that between them and my house specifically. What they call edge of woods is really just a line of trees. And then it's a railroad and then a line of trees. And that's it. I have concerns, especially during winter, that we are going to have lights, headlights shining in our backyard because we are less than 300 feet away from the edge of their truck route. We are most definitely going to hear the noise of them reversing. With a 1,200 foot buffer between us and Dunkin Donuts, we can clearly hear the trucks reversing from their lot. I can't imagine how much noise we're going to hear from one that's less than 500 feet away. I mentioned the lights. I don't know what sort of lights they're installing around the parking lots or anything, but I'm sure we'll see that as well. I'm sorry, what was that?
That will be part of our plan. There'll be downdrafted lights, I believe.
Correct.
Um, but that still doesn't.
We'll address that moving forward.
That still doesn't do anything about the fact that once the leaves are off the trees, there's basically no barrier between them and me whatsoever.
Light, light and noise.
I'll interject for one moment to the applicant. We can look at options, for example, backing up signals. Backing up signals when they back up.
Okay.
Down the road, if there's any of that, it's the conditions that raised throughout county.
It's not so much backing up down the road, it's backing into the base.
I I understand that, ma'am.
Okay. And like I said, just once there's no trees, once there's no leaves on the trees, we are gonna see all their headlights.
We will try to, we we will try to address that as we move forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Someone here on the left?
Thanks, William Keever. I'm one of the people that are two hundred feet from this property that's going up. I just built my dream home here, fifty-six Box Pond Road. And I did nothing but bring the value of this neighborhood up along with a couple others here who built another dream home right next to mine, who's gonna be right dead across from us, two hundred feet away. How big is this road? Over fifty-five across. I can easily see Best Buy. It's four hundred feet from the, about four hundred feet from Depot Street and Box Pond right there. You can see it clear as day when the wall. With, oh yeah, with trees, whatever. It it it's not gonna matter. We have to look at this awful building here where, James, remember when I was putting this in here and you guys were, don't worry, this is all concert. Nobody can touch over here. You live on this beautiful pond here. Nobody can touch over here. You're fine. What is this? This is, I can see this. We, I have water. I have ducks. We have, let's talk about the environmental, you can do your test or whatever. It's all sand. It's all gonna come running right past my yard, right through all my blueberry trees that are down there. Since before all of us, they grow wild. What's gonna happen to all that? You can say there's no runoff or whatever. I assure you this, you guys did this tiny little impact on our street. You fixed maybe in front of two houses. The impact of that, that you guys have been trying to do for months now is a joke. The water's already backing up as we speak. It's coming right up. I can see the colors of rainbows coming up onto my property. It it's not watering my plants for good. What are we gonna do about this when that goes in? And I mean, are we gonna just do a huge wall? Is that gonna make anything good? To, well, it's not gonna block the sound. It goes over it no matter what you do. We can hear everything. And that's what, over two hundred cars, over how many bays for trucks? We already hear the backing up all day long, all night long. And then we're just gonna hear that. It's just, there's no stopping the sound. Whatever you do, there's no stopping that sound. So that's one of my concerns.
Thank you, sir.
I've got it.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am, in the front, please step over here. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to keep telling you.
No, no, it's fine. Uh, Amy Hurley, I live at thirty-six Box Pond Road. One of the concerns I have is we moved out here and I love where I live. I love the quiet. I love, I'm not gonna talk about the traffic. We've, oh, done the traffic, but what's gonna happen with all the wildlife? Like, I sit in my house and I look out my window and I see the deer running down. When you start building up over there, you're gonna kill where they live. It's all, it's all gonna be gone. And also with all the noise and pollution, there's eight million turtles I look at every day. They from my property, they lay eggs. That's me gone too. The ducks on the pond, the geese, everything that we come out here to live for, the wildlife, the pride, it's gonna be gone. So that's another concern is what is, what can we do about that?
Someone in the back, been waiting patient.
I know, Rich Keniston, fifty Box Pond Road. I've lived here for twenty years. Uh, one of the concerns I have also is what's the impact on our property? When I used to see woods, now I've already gone out in the woods. I walk there every day with my dog and my family. Now, they've already started tearing down trees up there, already out there. I don't even know, you know, who okayed that or anything, but there's already tracks going through the woods out there. They're already like knocking down full areas up there, impacting the wildlife like we just talked about. But the impact on on all of our homes is gonna be huge, especially on Box Pond, Box Pond Drive, Depot Street also, all the other streets that everybody's talking about. So that's, that's a huge concern. Also, anybody ever drive up Box Pond Road? It's like you're living in a third world country. It's embarrassed. That road's embarrassed. So you're gonna drive up, like, we gotta deal with that traffic and then we gotta drive up our road that's, you know, it's actually better in the wintertime. But it's all covered with snow. That's why it's bad. So that's a compliment.
Mr. Chairman, there's also uh someone by the name of Shelby who has their hand up here.
Shelby, please, um, I can answer stuff forward, but please speak.
Hi, my name is Shelby Clop. I live at two thirty-four Depot Street. Um, the amount of traffic already on this street is ridiculous. The amount of trash and debris and feces, as already discussed earlier, is despicable. The employees that already, that work at the distribution centers on Depot Street treat this street as if it's a drag strip. I raise young children at my residence that I'm afraid to even let them outside because of how fast the cars and trucks drive on this street. We're talking upwards of seventy miles an hour down my road, which is completely and utterly ridiculous. I see the tractor trailer trucks, the penski trucks, the rider trucks driving sixty miles an hour down the road. I have small children here who could could easily get hit walking out of their driveway, walking out of the house. Not to mention the lights, the air horns we hear throughout the night, the jake brakes, the unnecessary noise that's coming throughout the entire night, through throughout the entire day. Um, I don't, we can't help the situation that we're in right now, but we can help to prevent it for the future and not make Bellingham and Depot Street a worse place than it already is. So I think that what you're proposing is an absolutely horrible and ridiculous idea. And as a town of Bellingham, we need to come together and make sure that this does not happen for our families, for our properties, for our wildlife and for everything that we have built and dreamed of for this town and for our houses. It, we can't have this happen and that's all that I need to say.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on Zoom? Anyone here? Someone in the back, I believe?
Hi, my name is John Foster. I live on three Weathersfield on the corner of Happy. Um, this building that you're gonna put in, or these three buildings, uh, this is a commercial property, so is it gonna be um twenty-four seven?
What I'm working on right now is also that we rent, sir, when I have eight to five, correct?
Uh, that's correct. That's the, that is an attempt.
How many days a week? I'm sorry?
Seven days a week.
That's the target we're working on right now, sir. That's the target we want to stay with. I I think that you can feel from the neighbors that um anything more than that should be a, could be a significant problem as well as the other things we talked about.
Just to, in your judgment.
Just one second.
Yeah, so, so it's gonna be twenty-four seven. They're gonna be there six. Eight to five, there's no way a warehouse works eight to five. That size is gonna be running there. They gotta run that longer than that. They gotta run two shifts anyway. Okay, so you're talking twelve hours. Okay. Twelve or, yeah, sixteen hours soon. Okay, alright, so that's, you know, that's eleven o'clock at night. So that's what I'm saying. It's just, you know, that's good. That's what the usage is.
Okay.
Okay, that's, that's a, that's not too good for the neighbors.
I understand and we've been.
Okay, that's all I want to say.
No, we're gonna hold the applicant to those out.
Yeah, like, well, doll, it's the same thing. They, they, they were supposed to be seven to three o'clock in the, three or four o'clock. And they run five o'clock in the morning, three o'clock in the morning until eleven o'clock at night. Sometimes they work Sundays. So that's, that's what we're dealing with over there too.
My, my just interjection there was to say that you can plan on saying, I'm gonna work eight to five, well, five, six, seven days a week. But the reality is, you sign a lease with somebody, they're gonna push back. They're gonna say, hey, you know, I I need to run more. They're gonna, they're gonna make some excuse why they need to run seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. I get that your, your, your plan is to run, you know, regular hours, but come on. As my business, as if I'm a business owner or whatever, I move in there, as my business grows, what am I gonna do? I need to work more. I, if my customers, I, if I need to compete with Amazon for for delivery or if I need to compete with other businesses that are getting one or two to three day shipping, for example, how do I compete if I can't run twenty-four seven? I work in a factory. I know how it goes. You want to run all the time at all costs. So, yeah, eight to five is cool. But unless there's a law that says they have to, that they can't work eight to five, they're gonna work eight to six, eight to seven, eight to eight. It's just gonna be, it's, the, once you give them an inch, they're gonna take them on. And that's all I need to say.
Um, Jim, in regards to, um, this is, these are permits. And we can control the hours of operation, the permit during this process, is this correct?
Also, yes, that's, you have both a development plan and a special permit due to the size of the structure. So there certainly can be discussion about what would be uh proper hours of operation. Um, I think, uh, you know, the residents brought up, bring up a good point. It's warehouse distribution use. Uh, I would imagine uh there's gonna be off hours. Uh, so that's just something we'll need to refine with the applicant because, you know, we, I think the board wants to have a condition in there that is, that, I mean, ultimately, if it even got to that, I would have a condition in there that laid out hours that are realistic um so that, you know, enforcement is is adequate. So I think, I think we just need to have a better conversation with the applicant regarding that.
Oh, wrong.
Anyone else on Zoom or here? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Melanie Mancini. I live at twenty Box Pond Road. Um, if you're familiar with the area, when you turn onto Box Pond, the very first house on the left, I am directly across the street from the Best Buy warehouse. When that went in, we had issues, very similar issues, very similar concerns. They assured us that the noise would not be a problem. They put a hill and a wall. They said it's a burn. It's gonna stop the noise, the light, the yada, yada, yada. I'm just here to speak from experience because I live right across the street from it. There is a hill. There is a wall. The lights, as someone on Zoom already said, the lights at night, especially in the winter when the trees are not cold, my front yard is lit up from those lights. The noise of the backup beacons, all times of day and night, beep, 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 nonstop. The trucks, I know we've been over the the traffic, but the trucks, when they get there in the morning for Best Buy, I don't know what these warehouses will be, but Best Buy, they have to stop at that security gate. When they stop at that gate, I don't know if they're arriving too early or what the holdup is. They can't get in quickly enough, so that's why they're backed up. They arrive in the morning, they're there at five AM. I don't know what the deal is with Best Buy as far as when someone lands the gate or when they're allowed to come in, but they sit there and lean on their horns at five AM across the street from my house because they want to get in and get out because they're in a hurry. So the light, the noise is definitely an issue. I don't see on these plans any burn, wall, hill, anything to stop that for these people. They put it in for, across from us, it doesn't do one bit of good. We still hear it. We still see it. Matter of fact, in the summer, the loading docks from Best Buy face our Fox Pond. When those loading docks in the summer, when it's hot, they open those bays and the workers are out there. They blast the music, profane language. We can hear it all in my front yard. I have lived in town for twenty-eight years. This is my third property in Bellingham. We bought on Box Pond. We owned land out onto the middle of the pond. We bought it for a quiet, serene commuting. We were told by conservation, when we bought it, we can't go anywhere near the wetlands. We can't, we can't clear woods in our backyard. We can't pick up a downed tree in our backyard because it's gonna impact the environment. Acres upon acres and pond acres and that's okay for the environment and wildlife. But I can't do it in my own backyard to get a view of the pond, but I won't. See, it's this particular project, aside from the traffic, it's further down Box Pond. So I already have my nightmare across the street. It's not gonna be across the street for me. It's gonna be across the street for my neighbors. And I hate to see happen to them what's happened to us. I pay twelve thousand dollars a year in property tax to this town. Twelve thousand dollars. It's a thousand dollars a month in property tax. And this is, the thanks I got was this and that across the street from me.
Kennedy, Amway thirty-nine Weathersfield Road.
Something that has not been discussed already this evening. Are you, what are you bringing up this evening?
I just wanted to make an observation if I could.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been a news and sports journalist for fifty-four years and I've covered a lot of municipal meetings. And I've done a few planning boards here and there in different towns. One, one of the functions, I think, and the role of a planning board is to control growth and promote orderly growth. And a big thing a planning board should always take into consideration is to ensure the serenity and the turn quality of the neighborhood. These three warehouses ensure four things: noise, traffic, depletion of water resources and an increase in air pollution. I hope you, I hope and pray this board does the right thing and defeats this. Uh, if it does, we'll be heroes. Thank you.
Amy, can you add to that? Air quality, I think that's. So I know you, so far anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I just see a hand raised on Zoom from Fred.
Yes, sir. Flow's yours.
Hi, my name is Fred Robinson. I live on fourteen Cathy Drive, Bellingham, just off of Hartford. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to raise the concern, my concerns anyway. And I'm sure a lot of the concerns of my, my neighborhood um is obviously the increased traffic that's gonna be coming down Hartford Ave. Right now, we are overwhelmed with traffic, okay? I work out hours, okay? I can find myself out of my deck at two thirty in the morning and I hear nothing but convoy after convoy after convoy of trucks in and out from two, between two o'clock in the morning to three thirty in the morning, even to four o'clock in the morning. If I get up earlier in the morning because of my odd hours and I have to leave at, let's say, seven o'clock in the morning, it's taking my life in the hands, just trying to get out on the Hartford Ave. The trucks are ridiculous. The traffic is ridiculous. And I'm not quite sure how we plan on dealing with that or if there is a plan in place to deal with this, with the increased traffic that's gonna be coming off of Depot Street. Okay, again, I heard the representative for the the warehouses stating that they were gonna place a traffic light at the end of Depot Street in order to get onto Hartford Ave to alleviate some of the problems with Depot Street or pulling into Depot Street and backing up traffic. That just tells me that more traffic is gonna be coming down Hartford Ave. It's not gonna be going down the other end of Depot Street onto Mechanic Street. So how does that help me? How does that help my neighbors? And again, the noise. And again, the noise is ridiculous. We again have the fire engines, the hazard responders, all going to Milford Hospital, sirens going off day in and day out. Every 15 minutes going down Hartford Ave. Again, a noise issue. And lastly, what about the roads? Who's paying for these roads? Okay, we have from Mendon to the traffic light and 126 that's been repaved, and you have these trucks going in and out, coming from Depot Street, coming from Kimball, coming from the Amazon. This is all on our tax dollar. That is my concern. And that is the end.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on Zoom? So right now, before we open up to the board, just to make sure we're on the same page here. Amy, um, need for special permit, we have noise, they'll articulate the waivers, traffic is a big significance concern. Hours of operation, the type of tenant, as I said before, stormwater management, um, parking for the vehicles. Uh, impact on the neighbors, Box Pond, Depot Street in the adjacent areas. Um, impact on wildlife, impact on the aquifer. Again, go back, construction timeframe, construction management, snow management, uh, road conditions throughout the town, throughout the area and specifically, um, Box Pond. Some of these, these minutes will be, um, made public and available to the select board, um, air quality, and again, the noise. So now I'd like to do, I wanna thank the public for their participation. I, I don't want you to leave. That's your participation. I don't think it's over. I want you to hear the questions that we have to ask, to have them brought up.
Uh, I just have a couple of questions. You have no idea who the proposed tenant might be?
No, no, in the, um, there's a, there's a backdrop. It's the industrial market the way it is right now. It's all essentially speculative. That's, that's people that are, keep this coming.
So this is built with spec?
Yeah, exactly. It's spec. It's not, they don't have a tenant that they're building for.
I could just ask you a question about what, so I'm looking at the big building. There, I think there are, there's a, it says there's a 30-foot gas easement going through the proposed building.
Yeah, that's extinguished. Um, that was an easement when we got the power plant on there. Once upon a time, there was a power plant posed for this. So there was actually a, there's no.
There's no easement there.
No, the easements, there's a record easement. It no longer exists. It's, it's essentially extinguished, but they showed up. Uh, there is a gas easement that runs parallel to the site, then crosses, and we need to track. Uh, that exists. But it only cuts through, isn't it?
But it just generically, at this point in the, um, same, this application process. I think all of the concerns that people have raised and hit on a number of times, I think those are all very valid concerns. I don't wanna be the, the person saying the word traffic again, but to me, that, that is a real sensitive issue, that this building is located in a very precarious place that's already there in terms of 126 and Depot Street, and then the center of town and the in-between. So that, that is something that we really need to take, don't forget. Noise, screaming, all of that stuff is very important, and what we have found productive is particularly when, when the neighborhoods come out and, um, it's really important for the applicant to reach out to the neighbors, to listen to them, to find out what their concerns are, or suggest perhaps even a meeting to, to hear them out and to see what can be done and, uh, regarding their concerns, I, I really do think that's important in, in this process. And then for everyone that's here, I, I think it's great that you're here. I, I, I've seen the Facebook's traffic. Um, I, I think it's great that there's people on Zoom. I would encourage you all to remain involved in this process and also with conservation, because that's, that's really where your influence is gonna be felt. But I would also encourage you that you learn about this process, that you learn about the, the role of the planning board, the role of the conservation committee. What it is we can do and what it is we can't do, because the planning board lives in this small little legal box, right? We, we don't, we don't have a magic wand. We're stuck with what we have. This is industrial's own property. So to have a productive conversation, to make sure that your concerns are met. You really do need to understand the process so that we can really flush this out and make sure this is a good project for your neighbor within the town. So I, I encourage you all not to get your information from Facebook, because most of the time.
So is it just going in anyway?
No, 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 not at all. No, but what, I, what, you have concerns. And I, I want those concerns to be heard and considered, but you need to understand the process and the criteria by which we have to evaluate. Well, I would. So I, no, so this is exactly the we are here to hear your concerns, to evaluate this project. The project is not a done deal. It's not. So I don't know anything about that. I suspect, and I. Everybody, listen, listen, listen. Listen. We, I would imagine, and that the applicant can address it, they're probably doing testing of some sort. There, they can do this. But, uh, but listen, listen, this is what I'm talking about in terms of learning the process, learning what they can do, what, what the, what, what they are, can do as owners of this land and what it is they can't do. So please, thi- this isn't, I'm trying to look for a collaborative process. This isn't, we're not, this isn't an adversarial process.
So they own them.
No, so they, they, I suppose they own the land. They're, yes.
So they are the owners.
Or I don't know what the status is, but they are the owners and they can develop the part.
Could you address the concern with what you've done in the back of the property and your ownership?
The US. Absolutely. Um, so the, the work that I believe the neighbors are referring to was soil evaluation as, as part of a due diligence. You go in and you, you go in, you dig test pits and borings and that sort of thing just to understand what the ground is. Is it rock? Is it sand? Where water is? It's a normal geotechnical process that you have to do to perform the due diligence when you acquire, uh, property. So it isn't constructing anything. It isn't presumptive that these plans are going to be approved by any stretch. It's this normal due diligence that you do before you submit plans to the town. You have to submit plans that show where the water table is, what type of soils there are. Is there ledge? That sort of thing. So I suspect that is the work that you're referring to, because that work was done over the past couple of, couple of months. Relative to the ownership of the property, the applicant has an option to purchase the, the property. So 2020 acquisitions has, uh, the option to purchase the property. That is their relationship in this, in this process.
Thank you. Yeah, so there's been a lot of concerns. I'm not gonna repeat them all. I'm gonna, you know. Brian mentioned that, you know, ask the community to stay involved, not only on this board, but the conservation board in particular. The other boards works in parallel with us, and I forget your fire zoning as well. So there's, it's a multi-phase, um, process through the town. And I would ask the audience, stay involved, stay, pay attention when things come up, when needs come up, please attend. You know, the Zoom options is in sight here. Stay involved, please. One, i- in addition to the, when we get to the traffic, um, I think we had two people mention the, the queuing of the trucks out on the street. Um, I wanna make sure that that is addressed when we get to, um, with the, um, with the consultants that we have. So, you know, looking at the plans, that was concerning to me, the bringing the trucks in, where, you know, they get there real early. The doors aren't available where they know. There's a lot of doors, but you get onsite, you know, that type of thing. Didn't seem like there was a pathway to, to rent the trucks onsite, some of them. So when you get there. Let's, let's make sure we do that with the trap.
Thank you.
I think we'll just continue.
Okay, fair enough. Uh, just a couple of quick questions. Is the traffic going to trigger any meepa filings?
Uh, no, no, the traffic generation will not, um, trigger meepa.
So no meepa filings at all?
That's correct.
For this project? Okay. Um, and the other thing too is that, is the traffic going to trigger a what will? For, um, your stormwater management, do you know?
Uh, I, I do know, and again, the answer for that is no as well.
All right. Well, I think, uh, yeah, peer review is gonna be really important.
Please.
Um, as everyone said, I think traffic is extremely important. I think some of the data points you mentioned seemed a little low considering everything I read in the studies. So I'm definitely looking at the peer review very closely. And I think the topic of home values is very interesting, so I'm gonna be paying attention to that. Um, but you know, that's my, my members have said, thank you for everyone coming out and participating. Um, one question though about the buildings, what are the clear heights for all three buildings? Are they the same?
Yeah, they'll be the same, uh, zoning, I believe it's 40 feet in this zone, so we'll comply.
For the building height, do you know the clear height?
I don't know the exact clear height. The architect gets to answer that question better, better than I.
Yeah, the, the proposed, uh, clear height is 36 feet.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in the board? Amy, I forgot one thing. Um, one of the residents, I believe, uh, lived on Depot Street. Um, near the, um, railroad tracks are concerned with the buff on the other side would stay not addressed. So I think the buff on the other side of the building, you will, you will need to address as well. Um, and do you notice a couple of people had their hands raised? So, unfortunately.
My question is, how many more meetings are we gonna have to do? I know it's all diligence and everything like that, but how many more meetings do we have to sit through to realize, again? I guess, no, because if this thing is definitely going up, I'm selling my house immediately. I want to get as much money as I can for it before they start digging, doing everything and dropping those.
Nobody wants to go to Bellingham.
If this happens, I'm selling. I'm just about putting in the last touches of my house and, and about to sell because if this goes, it's just gonna ruin everything. And I wanna get top dollar for my house before this goes up here and starts construction. So I wanna have an answer as fast as possible because that's gonna be literally thousands and thousands of dollars difference between a yes and a no. I really need to know, what is the timeframe of this yes or no, then we can finally get, how many meetings are we gonna go through until we have an answer?
Chairman, would you like me to take one?
Yeah, that would be nice. And I think if the process, sir, is not gonna be generated and sped up, um, based on, uh, potential of someone's sale. Our process is to look out for the benefit of the neighbors and the towns. We will vet this project until we get something we feel comfortable. But Jim, go ahead.
Right, so I mean, I think you've touched on it, uh, mostly. Um, I, I'm not sure if the, the question, the, the gentleman wants a legitimate question. I think it's, the, the process is, the board is gonna thoroughly vet the project, go through each and every law that the town has. Um, these process, this process takes several months, um, and sometimes, uh, over a year. Um, and so this won't be a quick process. Uh, even if it was a no, um, the process still is gonna take an extreme long time. Uh, because the, the board has a job, and that job is to vet it properly and by the, the law of the land. And without doing that, it puts, uh, not only, uh, liability on the town, but also on the taxpayers as we have to, we would have to, um, you know, defend that in court. Um, and so, you know, this is certainly a several month process, um, that, you know, the, the board will take and historically has been, um, you know, many, many months.
So I don't mean to be insensitive or needy.
No, it's, many months is hundreds of thousands of dollars when it comes to the housing market. Now we're gonna, now we're talking winter. No, so.
I, I, I understand, sir, but yeah, now. We, it's, it's a process, and I'm sure, I'm sorry that timeframe may not deal with your potential sale of your house.
I don't wanna sell my house.
I, I understand that.
None of us do.
I, I understand that.
I think it was just a matter of us.
Excuse me. I couldn't hear what you said.
You know, it's not a personal thing just to us. It's just one question that's weighing on several neighbors' minds. And I think it was just a general question. And I know that nobody cares about. But we would like to finish certain things on our property in order to be able to sell. So that, I think, is why we were asking.
I, I understand that, and I appreciate that, and it's a homeowner. I appreciate what you're saying. But you think this is a process we have to go through, and I apologize. You know, and sometimes it work, work out in your timeframe. You know, that, that's, I, again, I, I feel bad down the road, but I, I'm sorry. Last question in the back.
Just heard of, so he doesn't really, the buyer hasn't really purchased the land yet, correctly, right? Cause that what I heard earlier. He's, he's in the process of it, but he hasn't purchased it yet, right?
Can you address that?
That is my understanding.
This is the case, the planning board's best option in this, since there's so many people worried about the aquifer, the noise and everything else. Why don't you approach the whole entire town, purchase the land behind Best Buy and Dunkin' Donuts, and leave it as open space to save the aquifer and belly. But the one behind there, which is all surrounded by wetlands, the aquifer and everything else, tell the town to buy the land at $12,000 a year for taxes, $7,000 for taxes. Every one of us is probably paying $7,000 plus a year in taxes. The town should be able to afford, since nobody's purchased it yet, he's under, not under agreement yet, to buy that section of land, to leave it alone, to protect the aquifer.
I'd also like to remind the board that you.
Excuse me, sir. Can you step up, please? And we'll, gentleman in the back, when he's done, you'll lay the last question.
I'm really proud. My name is Luna Zaring. I live on Tix Heritage Way. I'm a retired paramedic. Uh, I've worked in this area for 47 years. And I've loved Bellingham all along. I came from Hollis to move to Bellingham 21 years ago. And I'm not pleased with the direction it's taken with its planning board, not at all. Uh, I have a trickle of water out of my house because we have no water. We sold half of it to Trankel. Uh, I'm, I just wanted to remind you guys that you're serving at our, our leisure here, you're serving us. Uh, we're here to, to make sure that we get what we need as citizens here, because we work too hard. Too hard to let people pass things through that need to be addressed and taken care of for us, not for you or for them, for us, because of town. It's a beautiful bunch of people, a great bunch of people that turned out, and I thank the people that came on Zoom. But we're gonna follow this, and we're gonna put as much money into it as we can, and we're gonna make sure that this thing doesn't take place.
One more question for the board, and I was curious as to what power you guys have over the ongoing problem that's going on right now, which is the problem with traffic from Best Buy. Best Buy is the issue with Devo Street current. And what power do you guys have to control the traffic? Which I'm sure you guys didn't plan on all these 18-wheelers being there every morning. But that happened and it's continuing to go on every single day. But, you know, what power do you guys have to go down there and say, hey, clean up your act? You guys can't have these trucks out here every day. This is ridiculous, creating a safety. Nowhere else in town, no other business has trucks, 18-wheelers, parked on the main roads. Nowhere. You can't think of anywhere, right? If it did, it would be a traffic, it would just ignite, right? So what is, you know, what is Best Buy? And what can you guys do to help us with the traffic currently on the street?
Sir, I don't think there are any members on this board. Never around where Best Buy was.
In fairness, and I'm not, I'm not shooting, but what can you guys do now?
Jim, can you address that?
Yeah, I know, I know a number of the neighbors have already been speaking with our safety officer, but I can regroup with him and report back to the board, certainly.
What we will do is, again, we don't have any power right now. So you go down to Best Buy and say.
Somebody, Tom.
Yes, it's a safety officer. It's the police department. And then this gentleman here will hear it. Down the road, they'll put measures in place if it comes to that, to control that. But we cannot, this board, retroactively, cannot go back to a business that we had no involvement in the planning. That is up to the town's safety officer and the police department. Jibble, I suspect, address it through an email to the appropriate parties and see what we can do. They will reach out to the management at Best Buy to see what we can do. In addition, besides the way they're parking, we'll address in that article or memo, the speed and the litter. Being concerned that you're in a name.
Yeah, what I can say is, is hopefully Best Buy will respond better to you guys than they did to me. Because I witnessed them throwing trash out of their trucks coming out of the yard. I tried to get in touch with Best Buy yet. There's, there's nobody returning phone calls. No, like, they don't care about me. Trust, well, it's not Best Buy, sir.
Another avenue, so that you.
I understand that they're going there, you know what I'm saying, no. Like, they're not, they're not responding to the trap and their drivers.
Sure, another avenue you want to.
I know they don't care. Be like me, if I got a business chairman and I had people coming in and dumping trash, and I went, eh, I don't care, it's not my fault. It's those guys, those guys that do it, and so after that. No, that's not how it works. Property owners are guys that's responsible, because he has the people coming to him. So they're responsible. And also the noise in the town too. You're also, just call the police department about the noise complaint. I'll get this one, 2:00 in the morning, that's what the noises, and it's waking you up. You call them, they'll come down and they'll have to shout them down.
Another action, is it the select board, attend some of the meetings? Get on the agenda and let your voices be heard.
Yeah, I bet you for sure the conservation commission would be extremely interested to take a walk in that woods right now, see the hundreds of trees that are already knocked, guaranteed.
Again.
Have you walked through that woods?
Any of you guys? Have any of you guys walked through that woods?
No, we have not. Excuse me, sir, just let me, let me finish. You indicated we had to watch for the boards. I said, no, we haven't. We plan to, we plan to do a walkthrough at some point in time. No, sir, it will not be after a decision is made. Sure, the trees. We were not aware of this project.
You're the planning board, you're not aware of this project.
Hold on, sir, let me finish my statement. The documents we received were dated September 2nd. This is the first public meeting, the first time we've had an opportunity to review these materials. So no, we have not walked through those before the trees were cut down. This is, again, our first public meeting, the first time this board has had the opportunity to discuss it. If we had chosen to go out there amongst ourselves, we would have violated the open meeting laws. And that's something we would not do. We're not aware of the trees being cut down at that point in time. I don't mean to be abrasive, but this is the first meeting where it happened. Our minds are not made up, as the vice chair said. I encourage you to reach out to the safety officer, the police department, the select board. Keep coming back to our meetings. Go to the conservation meetings, address their concerns. We will do a what? A site walk, excuse me, of the facility and look at. That is part of everything, every project since I've run the board that we've done. So yes, we will. But no, we've not walked through there beforehand. Again, we were, these were dated September 2nd and they just brought your, this is the first public meeting.
May I ask a follow-up question? So is there a separate application that needs to be filed with CONSER in order to move forward with this? And was it filed just yesterday before the CONSER meeting that evening?
Do you want to address that, sir?
Yes, applications were filed with the Conservation Commission this week. So we will be having hearings like this with the Conservation Commission in the coming weeks.
I hope that addresses your question. I can't thank you enough for your participation. You know, we try, we have listened to you, we've tried to address as many questions as we can. And I don't mean to sound, this is, again, our first meeting. This is a process that could take several months. Your participation is critical in this, as is it for the conservation meetings as well.
Do you have any information as to when the Conservation Commission meets and have they reached a so yet? Or is they just received?
Jim, do you know what denies the conservation?
Yep, I could touch on that. So the Conservation Commission meets on the second and fourth Wednesday of every month. And they, their next meeting, I believe, is October 13th at 7:00 PM. I believe they're all, they're still Zoom, however. So check, you can check with the Conservation Office and also on our front page of our website, the virtual meeting option has all the links there.
So the next meeting of the Conservation Commission will be the night before we meet again. So, you know, anything comes up in there, please let us know. We obviously are going to need, you know, several more meetings. You have a lot of homework to do. I believe Joe Anthony Alves is out there. I'm sure he's taken down a lot of notes.
Mr. Chairman, I took down quite a few notes. And I wonder, I don't mean to interrupt, but I wonder if this is the time that I would ask the board ordinarily, if appropriate, time to ask for a continuance.
Yes, except for one second, Attorney Wozniak.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the only thing I, the only question I had, because people want to be involved. This is also going, as I understand, for zoning next month as well? Before zoning on October 7th, the answer, the, one of the members asked a question about the height of the buildings, that would be a zoning issue. It also will be for zoning as well as conservation. So it's just as important to show up at zoning as it is to show up at conservation and show up in the board.
Attorney Wozniak, thank you very much. Before we go to the attorney, that triggered something from the applicant. In your future presentations, do you try to give us 3D renderings of what things will look like for the benefit of the household?
Relative to the building itself?
The building itself and the area around it.
Yeah, we did submit some renderings, we could present those at the next.
So they're available. Also, for the people here, we will look at the liability that we can, locate that screen to make it easier for you to see. I don't know what, what we have for limitations. But we will work on that so it's easier for you to see.
Before he scans up, his foot's wrapped around the cable where it's chairs. Safety issue.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Had a little bit of levity tonight. Joe?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the applicant, I would respectfully request that the matter, before you be continued on both applications, the application for 152 Depot Street, as well as the application for the abutting parcel, 140, lost my numbers here, 148.
And Mr. Chairman, in terms of dates, so I, my understanding is the board wants to engage in peer review, and so we'll start that scope as we typically do. And so realistically, I think the earliest we were talking is probably October 28th.
I think you both parties have a lot of homework to do.
October 28th would, will be fine for us, Mr. Chairman. We recognize, again, that you want to want to get some response from peer review, and that takes a while. And obviously, there are a number of issues that we can address for you, even if peer review hasn't completed their full review at the October 28th meeting.
Yeah, I know there's some concern about the speed at which we'll go through this, but I want our meetings to be productive. And I'm trying to avoid continuances if people are not prepared. So I think pushing it out to the 28th of October is prudent.
I agree.
I would entertain a motion for continuance or anything else.
So, Joe, and to the applicant, if you could, between now and October 28th, schedule an outreach meeting and work with the neighborhood, contact Attorney Wozniak, and set up a time for the applicant to meet with the neighborhood to go over their concerns. That would be very helpful. And also, just for our purposes, I would think that we schedule us a site walk before it gets too cold. So sometime between now and 28th.
I'll leave that to the committee. We can look at a schedule.
Mr. Salisbury, I did hear your question, and I will do my best to contact my brother, Attorney Wozniak, and see if we can arrange for some type of a meeting with the development team and as many people as he can round up.
I appreciate that, my number two. Joe, can you, that meeting, ideally, a lot of people will be in person, but if you also have the opportunity for people to participate via Zoom, it would be greatly appreciated.
Well, Mr. Chairman, for, just for the board's edification, most of my appearances moving forward will be by Zoom because I am, I'm going into semi-retirement and will be out of the area for most of the winter. So I will continue to be involved by Zoom as long as that's possible.
Thank you, sir. So we have a motion.
Thank you, thank you to the board. Thank you for the cooperation with the continuance. And to the extent that the form is there, I think more than happy to have John Kuch to sign it on behalf of the applicant. I know that's usually my job when I'm there, but John's capable of handling it, if Amy has the form ready.
We can get that tomorrow.
Thank you. Then Amy, you can, you can email it to me and I'll sign it and scan it back into you.
Very good.
Thank you. Thank you to the board.
Thank you. We have a motion for continuance until October 28th. I need a motion, I need a second.
I made it.
Do I have a second? All in favor of continuance to the 28th, please signify by saying aye of October. Before he leaves the public, please continue to participate in this process, participate in the zoning board meeting as well as the Conservation Commission. Look at the schedule correctly, they will be meeting twice before our next meeting. So, you know, please, we need your.
I still have a question.
Yes, sir.
Where can a recording of this meeting?
Okay.
It's on the town website, it'll be uploaded, so you can see it right on there. If you go, it'll say virtual meetings.
My only reason was that I just didn't want to get, we tend to wrap things up, I just didn't want to. But it should be public. Any questions you have about documents, reach out to the town planning board. They are online, they are. Again, I can't thank you enough for participating. Thank you very much. Once you leave, you please close the doors, we have some more business to discuss. Next item is the 18th public hearing on 455 Hartford Avenue. We have motions to withdraw on that, I believe. Jim, was that with prejudice, without prejudice?
The request is to withdraw the application without prejudice.
Yes.
No, she's trying to minimize the voice.
I just want to remind you, we have a meeting next Thursday night, so one, I intend it. So were your motion on the floor as if it's seconded? Sorry? Yes.
For 455?
Yes.
To withdraw?
Yes.
Without prejudice?
Without prejudice. All in this motion before any more discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. That motion passes unanimously. In addition, we have a motion for a continuance to October 14th meeting from our 30th Locust Street. The applicant is still finalizing updated plans per the request we've had to date.
I'll move to continue the hearing until October 14th.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion on the floor to continue 30 Locust Street, find the gang broke townhouses to October 14th. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The votes. Motion passing unanimously. A Bellingham shows covenant. Jim, it's my understanding that Crawford has sold the property to Eastland Development.
Yep, that's correct. And part of the condition of the decision was that they would notify the board of such transfer. We, the staff has met with Eastland Development. They seem like a good group of people. They were in agreement with all the conditions that were put forward in that decision. But we will certainly host a pre-construction meeting when they begin, or hoping to begin work.
Now you're assuming it's a separate industry, make it an infant factory?
That's correct, yeah, completely different entity. That's correct, yeah, completely different entity.
We need a motion to accept the, accept this.
Yeah, we should, we should make a motion to accept the transfer of, yeah, of title, just for the record.
Do I have a second? There is a motion in the floor, Desmond Stett, in regards to the Bellingham Shores Covenant transfer of ownership. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes unanimously. Have we had a chance to review the minutes from the last meeting?
Those will be at the next meeting.
Hopefully, we can assess the next meeting. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, just one thing regarding schedule for November.
Good, I think there are, both meetings are scheduled for holidays. Correct?
That's correct. So certainly, if if the board wants to pick up a week in November, you could do either the, well, very likely the third week of November. The first week in November is the zoning board meets. So I'm not sure if that would be available. So likely be either November 18th or just waiting until December.
I think we have, we have some times coming up in November. So I think it'd be nice to have a meeting in November. So if we look at our schedules, and again, the second and fourth Thursday nights are holidays. So we need to come up with an alternative. And I would like to recommend the third Thursday.
That'd be the evening?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
That would be the only meeting. One and only meeting. Entertained a motion to adjourn. We don't have much to change. Jim, we need to make that public, correct?
What's that?
The meeting on the 18th.
Yeah, we'll post it on the website.
We need to make a motion for that, or?
No, no, you're fine.
Okay. Entertain a motion. One other question. Jim, is there town meetings in the fall this year?
Oh, yeah, that's a good catch, Phil. I believe it's the Wednesday of the month. I don't know. Dennis, are you still on, what's the date of town meeting?
Yes, it is the the day before, so it'd be the 17th, Jim.
Okay, thank you.
Dennis is secretly at number five. I know you're secret now, Dennis.
Yeah. Hey, I did ask, just, I mentioned it to Jim. I did ask the chief. I sent him a text. He's going to have the the early morning shift. Take a look and see what the heck's going on on Depot Street in the morning.
Thank you. So that brings to, I might, we'll need to, on the 28th or the 14th. Do we already warrant for the town meeting that we need to discuss, Jim, or?
Yes, I I've mentioned it to Amy. We do need to discuss two rezoning articles that will be before town meeting. So those need to be posted and and a public hearing needs to be done be prior. So likely the second meeting in October, we would need to discuss those.
Okay. I think that'd be fine. I think between that and Depot Street, that could be a full agenda. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Yes, one more question? Now, should we, should we figure out a lot of sidewalk for the Depot Street things or?
I'm sure.
Jim, should that be in conjunction with the the applicant? Or do we just pick a pick a date or give them?
Yeah, it's always, it's always better to have at least their engineer there so they can stake something out. You get the corners of the building staked out and maybe the center line of the driveway. So you know what you're looking at, because really it is just a big wooded area.
Yeah.
We can do the 9th of this 16th. Are you sure you want to do it on Saturday?
Yeah, yeah.
What's probably in the morning? Jim, can you propose to, two dates? The 9th and the 16th?
Yep, not a problem.
On one, and then have the other as a backup in the case of inclement weather.
Yep.
And we could do that 10 o'clock.
October 9th, that's Columbus Day weekend.
Good point.
I am not going to be around that. Question, you're loyal. Shots fired.
Then let's switch that to the 16th and the 23rd. Primary date being the 16th. Backup date for 1th and 23rd.
Yep, no problem.
I don't think we have any more holidays. I could just send out an email to remind everyone. Shoot, any more last questions?
Jimmy, I just want to thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, no problem, guys, of course.
You're greatly missed, my friend.
Thanks, yes.
And that will not change. Motion to adjourn? All in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye. Both, motion passes.
Have a good night, guys.
Good night, Jim. Good night, Dennis. Good night, everyone out there.